Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Seven o'clock for August 1st, Thursday. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda, we're going to change the agenda more than we ever have, so be prepared. I'd like to add some agenda items. First one I'd like to do is add Amanda Venti to the new appointments for the beautification committee. We only have three listed there, and I'd like to add her. Is there a second? Those in favor? Second thing I'd like to do is replace item five, because item five and six were mistakes on the agenda. They're left over from last meeting, and we've done both of them. So I'd like to replace item five with 11F, which is the discussion of the Warehouse Point Fire District supplemental appropriation.
Why don't we just take that out of order when we...
Well, I'd like to... Yeah, basically, so we'll do that, if that's all right. So I move we replace item five with item 11F. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Third, I'd like to add the farm lease discussion to the agenda as item 12D. So I move we add the farm lease discussion to the agenda under new business, item 12D. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And fourth and finally, I'd like to add the JV sports to the agenda under item 12E. And so I move to add JV sports to the agenda under new business, item 12E.
So move.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So we've done it.
So with six, what are you doing?
Well, with six, I'm gonna just skip right over it, but I'll announce that we've already done it.
Got it.
Attendants, all the selectmen are here, and then we'll go on to five, the new item five, which is the Warehouse Point Fire District supplemental appropriation.
Yeah, no, you can bring him up if you want.
Maybe they were all tied together. Good evening, gentlemen. For the record, Attorney Carlina Medina, 487 Spring Street in July, representing the Warehouse Point Fire District. I received a call from Lou Flann, who's chairman of the Board of Fire Commissions for the district last week, and he had informed me that he had been in front of you, I guess last month, I assume under public participation or maybe an agenda item, I don't know which, to talk about the possibility or exploring the possibility of making supplemental appropriation in this fiscal year to the fire district in some amount, I think somewhere in two... Two hundred and thirty. Yeah. And he said they had a good discussion, there were some questions that this board had, and he had questions of me as well, and he couldn't be here tonight, so he asked me to come and try to answer some of the questions that you might have. Obviously, I'm not speaking on behalf of this board, I represent the fire district, you have your own capable town attorney. But I guess, not knowing what the actual discussion was last month since I wasn't here, I guess I'll just start from the beginning. I understand that there's been a request, let's say made, for you to explore the option of making an appropriation, a supplemental appropriation, in this fiscal year to the fire district. I guess the first question that would have to be addressed is whether you have the authority to do so. And I would submit to you on your charter, you do in section eight dash six B, you have the authority upon request of any board, office commissioner, or similar body to make an additional appropriation beyond the amounts approved under the fiscal budget. That language essentially mirrors the language in this statute which gives you the authority to do that. Seven dash three forty-four is the enabling section of the statute that allows you to make supplemental appropriations beyond the amounts appropriated in the budget. Depending on the size of your grant list, you can't make an appropriation in excess of ten or twenty thousand dollars without getting town meeting approval. Your charters are taking care of that, and I know your grant list is larger than the ten thousand dollar limit in the statute, so you've taken care of that in your charter by saying that any appropriation in excess of twenty thousand dollars has to be approved by your legislative body, which is your town meeting. So I represent a number of municipalities, and the process essentially for Board of Select and Town Meeting forms of government, which you have, would be first to get a recommendation by the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen would then send that off to the Board of Finance, and assuming that they approved or recommended the appropriation you made, would then go to a town meeting for a vote. So you call a state for town meeting, and if they voted to make the appropriation, then it would be made to the fire district. Obviously, one of the questions would be where's the money gonna come from? I don't know the size of your contingency fund, you're allowed to have up to three percent. I have no idea how much is in there, I don't think it's covered or not, but you could, you know, in the same process, you can make an appropriation from your undesignated fund balance, your general fund or whatever you happen to call it in East Windsor. So in terms of whether you have the authority to do so, essentially, what would be asked of you would be just to say, okay, let's send this on to the next authorizing board, which would be the Board of Finance. You can't make an appropriation, a supplemental appropriation, remove certain amounts of money between departments in the budget without the Board of Finance giving its approval. If they don't give the approval, it doesn't even get on to the town meeting. And then, so that would be a three-step process to do that. So I know that one of the issues, I'm sure for you as well as the district, is let's assume we get through that process. What happens to the money? So there was some discussion last month, I believe, based on what Lou told me about perhaps making a rebate, using that money to help refund some of the taxes that were paid to the district by the residents of the district. I did speak to Bob DiCrescenzo today, and I don't know, did he end up writing something?
He did.
Yeah. He told me what he was gonna say, and I, you know...
Yeah, I'll pass that out. He gave us an opinion, so pass that down.
I'm guessing it's gonna say that you don't have the authority to write checks back to our taxpayers.
Basically, that's what the last sentence says. I think I have an extra one here, I'll give you one. What?
One more.
You need...
Do you need one for...
Well, I gave it to Carl. You can give it to her when we're done.
Let's see, Sunny Murray, okay.
Oh. Actually, I have an extra stuff.
When I read a book, I like to go right to the end and see how I answered this.
When you read an academic article, they put the conclusion right at the beginning. Very helpful.
Yep. So he signed the case on the second page, which I'm very familiar with, it's the feeble case, everything's bad. So let's assume for the moment he's correct. So the next question would be, since if there is no authority for us to do that, if you were to make this appropriation, what would we do with the money? My assumption would be that before this even got to the next phase, that there'd have to be some express agreement between the district and town as to how it would use the funds. You know, sure, you wouldn't want to give them two hundred fifty thousand dollars and they go out and buy their truck. That's not the purpose of this. The whole purpose is to deal with the, I guess, I'll use the word inequities of the situation, in that the taxpayers of the district not only pay for fire protection on their side of the district, but their money, their tax money also goes to fund the Broadbrook Fire District. I haven't worked out the grant list situation, I don't know how large the grant list is in the district and how large it is outside, but, you know, let's assume that they equal. That would mean that the people in the fire district in Broad, excuse me, Warehouse Point are paying probably seventy-five percent of fire protection costs in the town of East Windsor. That being said, that's more of a policy statement, that's not really my job to tell you why you should do that, that's more for, you know, for the chief and Mr. Barton, I guess, to convince you that this is a wise decision. But you would be in agreement as to how the money would be used, and the only, if the purpose is to defray or to handle the inequities of the situation, then the money would be set aside to help defray the cost of next year's budget. One of the problems that the district runs into, and most districts do this when they have the town collect their taxes, is that the tax collector here needs to know the district's mill rate well in advance, all right? And sometimes, before you even pass your budget, they wanna know the mill rate so they can get prepared as to, you know, send out tax bills. So that puts the district at a little bit of a disadvantage in that they don't know by the, when they pass their budget, because they pass their budget early, like in April, you guys are probably in May, and then depending on how many times you go, you go over, you could be well into June. So they set their mill rate so that you can have that information, not knowing if there's going to be money in your budget for them or not.
Can I ask a question on that point?
Sure.
On the mill rate point. As a political subdivision of the state, which is my understanding what the district is, same as a municipality, are you to file their mill rate with OPM?
I'm not aware that they do, I don't know any of the districts that do that.
Municipalities do, right, Amy?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I'm not sure. So that's sort of the practicality of what occurs. Now, I know what happened is last year, you did make an attempt to get some money in there in the budget for them, and because of your charter, your budget failed, and I don't, I don't keep track of what happens in the town, I don't, so I don't have enough time getting the budget passed worldwide, so. But it didn't pass, so you reverted back to last year, plus whatever, two percent or whatever. So there's no appropriation in the eighteen ninety budget, so there was no appropriation to the district after the budget passed three times. So I suspect if you would have approved this, and then it went on, and got approved by the Board of Finance, and then approved at the town meeting, the money would sit in their general fund to defray next year's cost, and then if there was appropriation in next year's budget for them, so it would kind of like roll down for the next year and so on and so forth.
Could you repeat that? I'm not quite following that track. What, how is that your...
So if, let's assume the town gives the fire district this two hundred and forty thousand dollars in this fiscal year.
Okay.
My recommendation would be to them is that before you agree to give it to them, that we enter into a written agreement that tells you exactly what we're gonna do with the money, because the purpose of doing this is to help the taxpayers.
That's right.
Not to help the district buy something, or pay off something, or whatever else they might do, you know, with the funds. So that it would sit in their general fund, their undesignated fund balance, in that in the next fiscal year, which would be the 2021 fiscal year, they would take that money that's already sitting there and use that as revenue source for the following fiscal year.
What would be wrong with leaving it in the town coffers earmarked for the Warehouse Point Fire Department?
Until, let's say, June of next year?
Or more accurately, April, when they're doing their tax rate.
Knowing that, there'd be nothing wrong with that.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that would be a really good solution. You can hang on to it, it's already been approved by the legislative body, so we know we're gonna get it, we don't need it for anything.
Then they could clearly define what their budget was gonna be with or without the money.
Right, just like you, they would take the, right, the expanded, what are our sources of revenue? The district has very little sources of revenue, they've got fees from the fire marshal, which are, who knows what they're gonna be in any given year, and then we've got taxes, that's it, we don't have all the sources that you guys have. But it would be, like you say, a known quantity, like depending on something from the state of connection, knowing you're gonna get X amount of dollars in revenue.
Well, then the fire department could actually count on it.
They would count on it, right.
It's already earmarked to them.
That's right. And then if that was through a car, I suppose, rolling out, you could do the same thing every year, and say, okay, if we get money in the 2021 budget, it's there, but we're not gonna give it to them until the following April, so that you can count on for the following year.
Yeah. The sequence is out, is out of order. They have their budget process that happens before the town process.
Correct, yeah. And one of the reasons we do that is because we have a, and I don't know the exact date, but because you guys, the town tax collector, collects our taxes.
Yeah.
We are bound to have our mill rate into them by a certain date, otherwise they don't, they can't guarantee the collection.
Yeah.
I think that's a, that's not an unusual situation, all the fires, I represent ten fire districts, and we are in the same position, where the tax collector collects for them, gets a pay to feed, and we, by the agreements, though, by a certain date, we have to tell them exactly what our mill rate is.
The process of holding it here in the town, or earmarked for the fire department, would make it easy for them to do their budgeting.
Yes.
Because they have a guaranteed amount of money.
Exactly. It'd be no different than you holding, hey, I mean, you don't, you have money in your budget that is, you're not gonna need it until next spring or next whatever.
Exactly.
It just sits in your account.
Yeah.
Chief, what do you think about that?
Yeah, I...
Jim?
I just, if I could say something, just going a little history, this year, we did put two hundred and thirty-two thousand in the budget, and if the budget had passed in any one of the referendums, the three, maybe it was different, but at least in the first and the third, the Warehouse Point Fire District would have got two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, two hundred and thirty-two. And before we did that, we had an MOU or an agreement with the fire district that this two hundred and thirty-two thousand would be used to reduce the mill rate on the, on the budget they put forward. And they, just like you said, gave us a mill rate to tax the residents of Warehouse Point, but we, they were gonna reduce the mill rate according by the two hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Right.
And we, I should think that going forward, if we did the supplemental appropriation, then that, whatever, two hundred and thirty-two thousand would be used, we could make an agreement just to say this three, two hundred and thirty-two thousand will be used to reduce the mill rate of the fiscal year 2021.
Mm-hmm.
We, as a town, would like to have one fire department, have it funded in one, by one source, and that would be the town, probably, or it could be that the two fire departments, so to speak, would come together and tax as one. And how we'd do that, we'd have to vote on some kind of a special services district or something, but that's down the road.
That's a complicated issue, but yes.
Yeah, okay. Anyway...
Creation of a special service district.
Well, I'm saying that, again, I represent fire districts all over the state, and to try to consult, I mean, I'm not saying it's impossible, but it's a, it's a big ask.
It is.
It's a big ask.
Yeah, it is. But so, if we did this, what we'd like to do, this, to us, is just hopefully a Band-Aid, but it's, maybe it won't be, we'd like to get the Warehouse Point Fire District back in the budget for the same amount that we budget for the Broadbrook Fire Department. That, to some degree, that would equal out the taxes. We realize that we give the Broadbrook Fire Department a building for free and other things that Warehouse Point Fire District doesn't get, but at least that would be a start to equalize the inequity. And one problem we have in doing that is, right now, we gave the Broadbrook Fire Department about four hundred and sixty-four thousand, that's where the two hundred and thirty-two came from. The town can't really afford to give away, or not give away, but to fund four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in one budget season.
Really, they wouldn't, they wouldn't ask you for that?
No, I know they're not, but I'm, I'm thinking ahead, saying that we could build up, and that's exactly what we plan to do. Two hundred and thirty-two this year, maybe another hundred thousand next year, and finally we'll get to where we wanna be. And I think this would allow us to do that. I think if we reduce the mill rate by this supplemental appropriation, and then put the Warehouse Point Fire District back in the budget next year, and if it passes, that then, then we're starting to chip away at the need for supplemental appropriation, starting to get them back in the budget. So that would be good.
One of the things of doing it the way that we're talking about now is that, I would say, let's see, we're gonna have a written agreement, let's see, we get to that point. To the extent that the district, in your opinion, violates the terms of that agreement and uses the money for something other than to reduce the mill rate, you have control over it the next year. So you were told you're gonna do this with it, you did X instead of Y, you're not getting money next year, or we're gonna reduce it, or something like that. So it gives you that control, at least until you get to that point that Bob's talking about, which is either consolidation at one department, whatever, whatever else.
I think the leadership of the fire department has the integrity.
Well, I know they do, but I just, I just wanna make sure that you're all...
I disagree with your premise, though, Counselor.
Which premise?
That, you know, if the agreement were violated, we could, we could pull the money back, even though technically true, that would leave a cosmic hole that they need to fill. I mean, that, we can't crack...
No, 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 I'm saying that once the money's designated in the budget, you gotta give it to them. But in the following year, when it's not, you're starting from scratch, well, we'd have to go back to the situation we're in now. So it'd be foolish, they would never consider doing that. The reason we're here in front of you is because the situation now is, you know, is, you know, not workable for anyone, really. And, you know, so, but...
So is this the proposed solution to the underlying problem? Or is this a short-term solution to the underlying problem?
Well, I mean, how far back do you want me to go? Because we've tried some of the things that Bob mentioned.
Yeah, I've been around. So this mixes, is this something, are we, are we gonna be doing an added appropriation for almost a quarter of a million dollars every year in perpetuity, or is this a stopgap for some other solution?
No, the hope would be that you, we get, you pass a budget with us in there, in some amount, some amount, whatever assistance you give is gonna help to defray our mill rate, or so that our tax exposure to our residents is gonna be reduced, and that debt number, or that line item, we, first of all, we gotta get the line item in your budget. Until we get that, we have a problem. Now, once the line angle's in the budget, to the extent that it stays in the budget, then it's up to the district and you to negotiate how much you think is appropriate every fiscal year.
But I think that you really haven't answered the question that Jason asked, and that is, you know, in my opinion...
Yeah.
The right thing to do in a town like ours is to have equal fire departments. We might have, you know, two parts of a fire department, but it should be an equal fire department, my favorite. That means that to be handled as a, as a town fire department and do away with the fire district, that would be, in my estimation, the right solution to a long-term problem. There may be other solutions. But if we don't do something like that, then this problem is gonna go on, like Jason said, quarter million dollars at a time forever.
Yeah.
I think.
That's a policy question, which I'm not prepared to answer, because it's, you know, I have my own opinion, but, you know, I don't, the board decides how they wanna do it.
I understand.
Yeah. It's a legitimate question, and it's an issue there.
So from a, again, from a policy point, maybe this isn't you, maybe this is these guys, or maybe it's, you know, somebody up here, but we put two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars into a budget that was rejected by the voters. We're then gonna put two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars against the voters' directive to...
Well, no, you're not gonna do that, because the voters have to approve.
At the town, you're saying the town meeting vacates the referendum?
Well...
Don't get hung up on the semantics, but that's your point, right?
Jason, the voters didn't reject the two thirty-two, they rejected the third budget.
Right.
Which, because they didn't have anything in the prior year, they got zero. So they didn't directly reject that.
So by that same point, we've got people here who are interested in restoration of JV sports. How do we know that the voters didn't reject the notion of funding the schools to the point where they could have a JV sport?
Yeah, I think speculating on what the voters wanted is...
That's exactly the point.
Yeah, so I don't think we should spend a lot of time speculating on that. Somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Finance to have a line, have a memo item that stores two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars for the Warehouse Point Fire District to defray the expenses in their next budget of 2021. And that would be held until June of next year.
I think...
We need to add anything else?
I would say that we need, and there would be a memorandum of understanding that it would be used to reduce the mill rate.
Okay.
Should we have the memorandum of understanding before we vote on that?
I don't think we should need it before we vote, but before we give them the money, we need it.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
Do we know that we have the money?
Actually, I don't think, well, we do, we do have the money. But right now, we are about a hundred thousand dollars over in the fund balance where I believe the twenty percent threshold is, and if you wanna ask Amy, she's right here, but, so, but I think by the time next June comes around, we'll have more money in the supplement, in the fund.
But that's a hundred thousand dollars over the high limit, right?
That's over the high limit, yes.
And we've been saying we wanna be between something like twenty and twelve?
Twenty, yeah, yeah, and ten.
Ten and twenty.
Yeah.
Ten and twenty.
So we could definitely fund another hundred thousand.
We have a hundred and...
And we're a hundred thousand over twenty right now, correct?
Yes.
So we've got that area between ten and twenty that is usable.
The board, is it okay with that?
I'm sorry?
If the Board of Finance is okay with it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, if there's no more discussion, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, a poll.
No.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna forward to the Board of Finance this motion, and they can take it from there.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah.
I appreciate you letting us go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you for having me.
It's the right thing to do.
Do you mind standing a little bit?
For pension.
For pension?
Okay.
Okay. I would like to change the agenda once more, because I see Amy's here, and Amy knows quite a bit about items, new business items A and B, so that's the approval of the managed accounts for the pension plans, and also, she knows about the defined benefit pension plan that is in your package. So I would move that we bring Amy up and do new business item A, 12A and 12B at this time. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll be in lieu of Chair.
Bring in the chair.
I'll be in charge.
Okay, so we can start with the discussion and approval of adding the ICMA RC Managed Accounts Program to the defined benefit contribution and deferred compensation plans that ICMA RC offers through Morningstar, so if you could tell us about that.
All right, so when we set up ICMA as both our provider for our 401A and our 457 plan, we did not choose the managed accounts intentionally because it was a buy-up program, but in her meetings, people asked for it, and are willing to pay the additional fees to have someone else pick and choose their investments, move their stuff around for them. So we are offering it, but employee has to do something to get into it, because there's a fee offsetting it, but they would be responsible for paying.
They would pay the fees?
Everybody, 457 and 401, all pay their own fees.
Okay.
So it's just an offer for, there was interest in it when she met with the individuals. So ICMA came back to us and said, okay, you have people interested in this program, but you didn't pick it as one of our offerings when you set up with us. So that's really all it is.
Do they, like, most plans where they just deduct that fee from whatever's in it?
Yep, from the earnings.
Okay, so not chase them to pay the fee?
Right. No, it's just deducted out of the earnings.
Okay.
The interest you earn is actually net of fees in any of your investments.
Okay. The fees are evenly high, aren't they?
No.
No, it's like 28 basis points or something?
Yeah, no, their fees aren't very high at all. Overall, ICMA has extremely low fees, and boy, we were paying 1% for the manager and 1.25% for some of the funds. We are only paying .42 for the actual whole ICMA right now, that includes both those pieces.
Okay.
So this is an individual fund where somebody's gonna choose to do, so it's basically paying for a financial planner, is what you're choosing to do. And it's just an option that we didn't have, that people wanted. So we said, okay, it doesn't matter, we don't have to have five people, we don't have to have any people, it's just an option that people can have now if they really want it.
So there's no requirement that you must have 10 people?
We don't have to have any.
Okay.
It's an opt-in service. If you want it, you can have it, but you gotta pay for it.
Okay, I'll move to approve the Managed Account Services Agreement between the Town of East Windsor and ICMA RC offered through Morningstar as presented.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to new business 12B. And that's a discussion of the defined benefit core document and Appendix C for the clerical and Appendix H for the dispatchers. And again...
All right, so, since I started here, I've been working on the pension plan rewrite.
For about a year before that, too.
Somebody else was working on it before me, but I've been working on it. So basically, what we did is we took the core defined benefit plan we had and had all the IRS updates that needed to happen from the lawyer, George Casper, at Pullman and Coffey. So that product that you see there is almost all exclusively IRS new rules. So like, one of them was something went from 90 days to 108. Well, that's because that's what the IRS says we have to do for people who are serving our country.
Okay.
So there's changes like that, but nothing in it is actually changing the core of the plan. The core of the plan is really tied to the appendix. The negotiated changes for both clerical and dispatcher are in those new appendix. So we have negotiated clerical to leave the DB plan. Everybody hired after January 1 of 2018 is now in the defined contribution plan. And the dispatchers, I think, pretty much stayed the same, but they had previously been part of the police appendix, and then had to be carved out and given their own sheet. So there used to not be an appendix each. If you went onto the plan doc on the website now, you would not see an appendix each, because they were part of the police one. But they have been DC only since 2007.
And their contribution increases are not graduated?
Well, they're still at 5.5. They don't have contribution increases, because they weren't at 2%. They've been at 5.5, and their DB percent is 5 also. So they're already where we're trying to get everybody else, too. So they were kinda ahead of the game. They went to DC 12 years ago. So that's what they are, and its culmination. Mike Harrington, which is our labor person, along with George Casper and myself, have met numerous times, going over edits, changes, updates, things that needed to happen over the last, I don't know, 16 months I've been here. So we finally have a good product. And the Pension Committee approved it last Thursday?
No, the 25th.
The 25th?
Yes, it was the 25th.
Yeah, last Thursday. So they approved both core document and those two appendix. And there will be several more appendix coming. B is already in the works, because we had a TA with the police in May of 2018. So that one is in the process of being rewritten by George now. And Mike is asking him for it, so it should be coming soon. So we'll be back to you guys for that one. And then, but the core document won't change. So we're not gonna have nine different pension plans. We're gonna have one pension plan with nine different appendix.
Which makes a lot more sense.
It makes a whole lot more sense, because every 10 years, we're required to rewrite them.
That's too bad.
So there makes no sense to do nine of them.
No.
Individually.
Since Mike was okay with this.
Mike is okay with it.
Even though we have not finalized the dispatcher's contract as yet.
Well, the pension we agreed to, and they ratified last November, so I don't think we have a choice.
Okay.
So this was all separate from negotiations.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
The pension started earlier and just took way longer. So theirs was already agreed and ratified last November.
Okay.
And you guys agreed to it, too. We just didn't have final language. This appendix is really the final language.
Yeah, it's separate from the contract, that's right, that's why.
For all of it.
Not our number.
Yeah. So we have four that are in the works, these two plus two more, and then we have five more or six more that haven't even been started yet for negotiations. So pension isn't done by far, but at least the core document makes it a starting place for everybody, and then just working on the appendix as they come up. So, but yeah, Mike's worked with me a ton on it, George has worked with me a ton on it.
If Mike says it's good, then I'm good. You know him, too.
Yep.
He's the guy.
Okay, is there any further discussions or questions?
Nope.
I have a motion. I move to approve the core town document of the East Windsor Defined Benefit Plan and Appendix C for clerical and H for dispatchers as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Item number six was an error on the agenda, so we're gonna skip over that. Approval of many meeting minutes. So I move to approve the special meeting minutes of July 11, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 18, 2019. Is there a second?
Standing.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Okay.
He's not here.
Okay, then we go on to communications. Is there any communications? Okay, we'll go on to public participation. Any public participation?
Catherine, other seven on Dipo Street. I saw that you had the reappointments for the CIP Committee on your agenda tonight, and I just wanted to say that last year, I really enjoyed working with this group of people. It was a very group with varied backgrounds, and everyone had a different and important point of view to share. So I would just encourage you to appoint all of the people that asked to be reappointed.
Okay. Yes.
May I approach the board?
Okay.
My name is Chandra Capdelli, two Ryce Street. I know that you put the JV fundraiser on the agenda, for that which I appreciate very much, but I'd actually like to speak to you all as individuals briefly. As you are already aware, there is a target fundraising campaign happening in the community to support the junior varsity athletic program, to continue at East Windsor High School. In 21 days, we have raised over $9,000.
Congratulations.
With close to 100 donors in the community, across the state, and across the country. We will be featured on NBC News in the upcoming days. So we do have a reach. Our donor pool includes single fathers, mothers, corporations, extended family, other nonprofits, I said other nonprofits, but nonprofits. So I am here specifically to request, or may I be so bold as to suggest, that each of you gentlemen, as formidable representatives of the Town of East Windsor, demonstrate the support you have for the youth in this community by making contribution to this fundraiser. You can do so by following the information that I will link here to be included with the minutes. Also, we are planning a fundraiser event to celebrate the competitive spirit and unity that is very present here in this town. It's what the whole mission is built from. We'll be doing that in September. I hope you all will come. I would like to personally challenge each of you to roll up your sleeves and maybe take part in our arm wrestling contest.
Oh, Jason.
My buddy said Jason.
If that's not up your alley...
Steve's pretty good.
If that's not up your alley, I'm sure that we will have an activity that you will enjoy. Mostly, I am asking you to donate, I'm asking you to come have fun with us, make it clear to the students, the families, and the citizens of this town that you are on our side.
What's that date again?
Tentatively, hopefully firmly, by tomorrow, September 29.
And it'll be where?
We are hopeful that it will be Skelp Hall, a place that can involve all of the families in the community, inside, outside, live music, maybe considered a party. Hopefully, we have lots to celebrate.
Great.
What time?
11 to 3 is what I'm working with right now. We have just, we're just in the process of forming the committee for the event, but we're really excited, and we have a lot of ideas and...
That's good.
What time is the arm wrestling contest?
I was thinking 2 o'clock.
I have something at 2 o'clock.
It's 11. But thank you for your attention.
Paul, thank you for what you've got. Okay, further public participation, yes?
Gillian Hubbard, 40 Mel Street. I just wanted to say thank you to the board for not only adding Chelsea and Vaughn to the agenda tonight, but also Amanda for the beautification committee. With the five of us being appointed, we're gonna be able to move forward. The group of us together, we have a very versatile thought process, and we have a really awesome enthusiasm that I think will be incredible to bring to the community. We've seen a real ripple in the community of positive go-getters out there, Shandra and her team being one of them. And I'm just really excited for you guys to add these three later in the next, so thank you.
Thank you. Further public participation? Sure.
So the other evening at the meeting...
Oh, you have to say your name and address.
Oh, sorry, Jeffrey Ostrau, two Ryce Street.
No, you can hear me.
Jeffrey Ostrau, two Ryce Street. The other evening at the meeting, one of our selectmen voices concern about the verbiage and the charter revision. It is clearly written in a way that 90% of the community will not understand what they are doing. I asked when the mailer goes out to the community about the charter changes, will it have a brief summary on each change? I was told that there wouldn't be. I was asked by the CRC chairperson if I had any suggestions. Took the time to think about it, and I do have a suggestion. I believe the explanation should be written by an unbiased party, as of right now, majority votes held on this board of selectmen by a political action committee. The Charter Revision Commission also, again, picked by this committee. Just to clarify, the definition of a political action committee is an organization that pools funds for campaigns for ballot initiatives and legislation. So by this definition, they are special interest group and biased. That being said, our town charter is being rewritten by a special interest group that is trying to consolidate power and remove checks and balances which separates abuse of power in our town government. I'd like to use one example for this that is concerning to the general public. Question on the ballot will be, do you think the police department should be part of the town or town departments? This is a loaded question, does not reflect the true purpose of this change. The verbiage is very important, and the explanation needs to be clear and transparent to the public so they can make an informed decision. And that is your job as the Board of Selectmen, to make it clear before approving it and sending it out to the public for a vote. Is it true that under the new charter language, the police department would become a town department and therefore be directly accountable to the first elect? And I'm asking all you this question. I think a lot of people would like to know.
Well, right now, the police department has to come to the town for funding. So in that sense, right now, they're accountable to the town. What has broken down, and the reason I think it would be good to make them part of this town as a department, is they've kind of like isolated themselves from the town government. And this would help to create a dialogue between the town and the police department. And there's a couple examples I can give you. Just recently, we are trying to move the animal control or animal care shelter from where it's presently located on Mel Street to a regional one that's at the end of Ryce Street on Sullivan Avenue. It's not clear in my mind why the police commission is pushing back on this. We've done a lot of work here. I called up the chief of police Monday and asked, and got his voicemail, so I asked him to call me, and he didn't. Today, I called him again, and he did return my call. I got his voicemail again, and he said he was ordered by the police commission not to do anything or talk to anybody about the animal control officer and the Tyler Animal, Regional Animal Care Shelter on Sullivan Avenue. So here's the police commission actually micromanaging the police department to prevent me talking to the police chief. I have to now talk through the police commission. Now, the police commission meets once a month, so he's stifled conversation between the town and the police department. That's, I believe it's a political reason. I have no idea why else it would be. Another example is, we have, unfortunately, some gravel pits here in town. They run as much as they're allowed to run, 90 trucks a day, to and from, and they're heavy trucks, and they're, a lot of them are running right down Sciantic Road. And there's signs that say, no trucks, and they're tearing up the road. And residents are calling me up, like, I can do anything, because the traffic authority is the police department, and it's the, run by the police commission. And they're not inclined to do anything about this. In fact, I found out by calling the Public Works that the signs, while they're not located in the proper place, because the trucks are coming in after the signs, so they don't even see them. But also, the, it's silly, but it's a Department of Transportation thing, I guess, the signs are yellow with black lettering, and those are illegal, they can't be enforced, they have to be white with black lettering, so we have to replace the signs. But the police commission says, oh, we can't enforce them anyway. So there's traffic problems here in this town that really need to be addressed, and the citizens care about it, but the police commission doesn't care about it. So obviously, we, that's another example. I'd say, those are two that come to my mind.
I hear from...
Sure.
... Wilson. Now, again, I appreciate the explanation, but I'm looking for a yes or a no, and I will repeat the question immediately. Is it true that under the charter language, the new charter language, the police department would become a town department and therefore be directly accountable to the first elect, which would not make it independent? Would now be overseen by a political office? Yes or no? Nancy?
There are two parts to that. One is it would become a town department like all other departments in the town. One is it would become a town department like all other departments in the town. It would not become a political issue by anybody. Do you want me to answer or do you want to speak? I'll answer, okay?
And let me, let me just say that we don't usually allow back and forth and it's very unusual to question people on the board, but we're letting it happen.
I understand.
And let me also say, and I'm pushing, I'm doing a back and forth, the police commission is very political, run by the chairman of the Republican Town Committee. The Republican Town Committee has thrown me out and Steve Dearborn out, so nothing political there. And he's, he, when I took office, because I had primaried against the Republican Town Committee, he's chairman of, he, or at least some people on that said, "If we don't help Bob, he can't succeed," and they're pretty right. It's very difficult. So, there's definitely politics involved in the police commission. I go into that further, but let, let the, let the people answer, no back and forth.
The example Bob gave about people calling the town hall, calling the first selectmen up, "They got a problem with car speed. They got this, that," okay. And you can see from the examples that there is some issue there. And most all other towns, you look at South Windsor and you look at other towns, that is the setup, that the police chief reports to, not from an investigation standpoint, not from reviewing and, you know, taking care of their officers and where they're going to patrol. They don't do, the first selectmen's not to any of that. It's merely to have a line of communication directly to the police chief, which the first selectmen's at full time during the day, so is the police chief, the police commission is not. And I think that just improves the service to the people in the town. Again, they come to the board for their budget, fine, and we look at it, move it on. And the same thing, you know, by having it as a town department would be like all others. We'd have probably a better sense of purchasing things in a group where they're not going off on the side and getting the best cost for what it is for the town. That's really what we're looking to do. There's no interference in doing anything with the police department. They need to manage their people. They need to manage and enforce the laws within the town. We have nothing to do with that. In fact, the police commission can, will continue to do that.
And I appreciate, I'm not judging the way you're making it, so that would basically be a yes. Just trying to understand how it works and guess the first selectman would be.
You want to answer?
Yeah. I believe that the police chief should report to the, to the first selectman. I have never seen an organization where the responsible person does not have the authority to direct the people. And in this particular case, they do not. Bob has no authority in effect over the, over the police chief at all. So, my answer is absolutely, I believe that the police chief, like all, all other functions, should be responsible to the boss. I come out of corporate world, don't know much about politics. I couldn't have survived if I had outlined people who could tell me they're not going to do my job. As a program manager, I, there were people who had functional responsibility for designers and analysts and the draftman and so on. But when it came to doing my job, I gave those people, the people they assigned to my program, day-to-day instructions and they followed. I think it's an absolutely untamable, untamable situation if the, the boss can't direct the people who work on it.
Is your question, is it our understanding that the police department would be accountable to the first selectman or should the police department be accountable to the first selectman?
I'm asking, the verbiage that's in the new charter revision, is that telling us that they are accountable?
Yes.
You're looking at me?
Sure.
From what I understand, Bob wanted to talk to the chief. Correct me if I'm wrong. The chief said to him, "I don't have to talk to you." Now, that's a goddamn problem. When you tell commander, the person running this town, that you don't have to talk to him. That's all I got to say. And I can, I'll, I'll, that was one of the first things when I took office, the chief of police said to me. I was sitting with him and the deputy and he came into my office and said, "I don't have to talk to you." And I said, "What?" And he said, "When I was a, in the prior administration, it was Linda Roberts," he said, "The police commission told me not to talk to her and I didn't do it." So, there you go. So, have we answered your question?
I appreciate that.
How do you run a railroad that way?
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to call on some other people. They have their hands up behind you and then we'll come back there. Ed, I know that...
Ed, Phil phoned, twenty-two Scannick Road. I've been a member of the base commission for eight years. During that eight-year period, I could count on one hand how many times I've been with the Board of Selectmen, has come to one of our meetings with questions, nor have I ever been approached personally or by phone by any members of the Board of Selectmen. And this goes back, I'm not just, I'm tasing out this one Board of Selectmen. There had been, there was a line of communications between the town hall and, I'm going to interest? I'll let Bob discuss that more. But because of problems that have been created, more specifically with this board, we have had problems managing the police department. And there are issues within the police department, personnel issues, that are affected by the actions and the attitude of the Board of Selectmen that has been shown to the police department. You are hearing one side of the story tonight. Come to the police commission meetings.
I would suggest the police commission have a dialogue with the Board of Selectmen if there's a problem. I haven't heard from you either. We'll look at it now and you're going to hear from us.
Because the conversations can't, don't seem to be simple. They turn very quickly, as you've seen tonight here. Thank you. I'll go ahead further, Ed, Commissioner.
Julian Hubbard, Marty Mill Street. There's a couple things that I wanted to make mention since you had brought it up. In regards to the charter, I've gone to the CRC meetings and I have made my personal feelings known as far as making sure that the average person is able to understand what it is that they are voting yes or no for. I have suggested to the Charter Revision Commission to have it available here at the town hall and wherever else we're having the voting going and taking place, so that they can see this is what the question is, this is what the question pertains to, and this is what it used to be, so that they can understand it in their own language. I know that it will be available online and according to John Matthews at the seven-twenty-two meeting, seven days prior to voting. That is a very short period of time for most of the public to be able to really sift through all that information and, and understand it. And not only that, but not everybody in the community has access to the internet. I know that you guys have mentioned in your last Board of Selectmen meeting that there's going to be mailers going out, which is great, but a lot of times, I'll be honest, it gets lost in my junk mail and it probably gets lost in everybody's junk mail. So, I think that having that information as soon as it's available, readily accessible and printed for people to receive here in the town hall, at the senior center, at the library, and wherever else we're going to be doing our voting, be accessible to those people in the community, because not everybody has computers and not everybody understands legal jargon. Even though I've sat through most meetings between April and now, I still don't understand half the stuff with charter meetings, because, well, half of it's them just talking about their personal experiences and half of it's legal conversation. But I do understand quite a bit of it. I do believe that the reason why I understand a lot of it is because I've gone to somebody and not everybody has that opportunity. So, that's what I wanted to touch on as far as the charter goes. And that goes for all the questions, not just the, the police department. And then as far as what you have mentioned with track, why is there so much pushback from the, from the police department and from what I've gained as far as knowledge goes, and Bob, I think will speak, so he can correct me if I'm wrong, but from what my understanding is, is the reason why there's a little bit of pushback, is it because they don't care about the dogs and it has nothing to do with a political stance so much as it has everything to do with the safety of our officers and our community? A lot of times, we only have two officers out there and it takes three times as long for them to bring an animal from here out to South Windsor and back. In that time, one of our officers or our civilians could get in trouble. And if we only have one officer in town and the other person is out in South Windsor, that's not really a safe thing. So, unless we are willing to dedicate one specific person outside of those two officers to run back and forth constantly, it doesn't make sense for them, in my opinion. And I think that from what I've experienced going to all the meetings and understanding what everybody's saying, it really comes down to the safety of our officers and our public and not necessarily our politics side of things. And I am not a Republican, so just going to lay that out there.
It's not too late to say no.
So, that's, that's what I wanted to say as far as my understanding, to try to help clear things up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra?
Sandra, thank you. Just to speak to what Julian just said, I think like in the six hours between like six PM and midnight last night, there was like a horse and a dog and a cat and I think a kitten that escaped too. So, oh yeah, there was like a giant snake too. It's not, we have a lot of animals in East Windsor, but can escape.
Yeah, no, that's true. The, that Regional Animal Control Shelter is right at the end of Ry Street, so it's not very far. You could, some people...
You could get there on horseback.
You could get there on horseback. You could actually walk if you're, if you're down, down, you know, in that area of town, but... Any further? Bob?
Robert Leach, thirty-nine Turk Street. I'm also your police commission chairman, so to speak to the first selectman's points that he made. To start off and just so that everybody is aware, I am available nearly twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. If you call the police department and you need to speak with the police commission, they can get ahold of me anytime. So, figure that out. I'm always available.
Great.
There are a few other points. As far as the police commission having a pushback on the tracks facility, that's false. We haven't made a decision. So, I'm kind of discouraged to hear you say that because as you're well aware, we haven't made that decision yet.
That's great too.
We're still studying it. So, it's, to placate it that way is piece one there. Oh, one of the points that we want to make, as far as what you had mentioned is with the trucks that are hauling gravel from the, from the gravel pit, as you know, I responded to you on that and I would like to read that response to you so that people are aware of what it was. This is on April tenth. On Wednesday, April tenth, I received your letter regarding complaints received concerning dump trucks. The police commission, Chief DeMarco, Deputy Hart discussed your letter at our monthly commission meeting. As you may know, the police commission members, along with Chief DeMarco and Deputy Hart, comprise the local traffic authority. The hours you mentioned between seven to five PM are normal business hours. It would be normal business hours when any truck can drive on a given road. Traffic along the routes mentioned, as well as all of the public, town interstate roads throughout East Windsor are passing by trucks. There is no law against that. There's no ordinance against that. The only limiting factor may be the gross vehicle weight on bridges, which are clearly posted with GBW ratings. While there are signs on Scannick Road that request that trucks not use that route, you must realize that it's simply a request. It's not an enforceable violation and I think you would notice, this is a request from the Board of Selectmen for trucks not to use that road. There is no law saying that, there's no way we could even cite somebody for using that road with a truck. No law to stand behind it. It's just a request. It's a Board of Selectmen request. And while I respect that and I, and I think it's a good idea because those roads aren't anywhere near the compliance that a state road we need to do. So, of course, I would agree with you. I don't want dump trucks traveling down those roads either, but to imply that the police commission doesn't agree with you on that is false.
No, I kind of implied the traffic authority didn't do anything.
Well, there's nothing we can do and that's why I'm explaining to you, like I said, it is not a violation of any law. We can't just pull a truck over because of the fine requesting them not to drive on that road. There's nothing that we can cite them for. Furthermore, in, in your letter to the police commission, you've asked us to pull over those trucks to find out what they're hauling. That's unlawful. We can't do that. We can pull them over if there's a violation for traffic violation, moving violation, but we can't just pull them over to find out what they're hauling. So, to say this that we don't care and if we aren't doing our job and that you would somehow influence this in another way, I think you'd be wrong. There's law and you have to follow. And you can't just throw those laws away because you think it's something that has to happen. It's important to know a lot of the intricacies that are involved in all this and the reasons why we have an independent commission that's very involved with the police department. Think about this, we haven't had a lawsuit involving the police department in over seven years. And that's due to the administration, the police commission, and how we run things and how we operate. Things like this, just the dump charge, for instance, you could get yourself in trouble by, by doing something like that. Then again, it's just, it's just the wrong way to go about it. You think about this, the police commission was established by ordinance since seventy-one. It's forty-eight years and the police commission has been in this town and they've been the ones responsible for all, the authority of the police. Since that time, the chain of command has always been, the police commission is in charge of the PD. And you're right, you're correct, the, the chief of police does answer to the police commission. Previous administrations before yours, the chief had a very good relationship with every sitting first selectman that's been in this building. The, the personal issues that you have with the chief, I believe, may be of your own making. And I would encourage anybody here, anyone that's watching on YouTube, anybody in the public, to ask our chief why there is a personality issue that exists between the first selectman and you. I think that would be helpful and rather than trying to imply that this is something that's put forward by the police commission or put forward by the chief alone, it is false. Sure, you don't. Furthermore, if you think the police department is going in the wrong direction, please contact me, the chief, or anybody. Like I said, I'm available nearly twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. If there's any kind of problems at all, I would like to know about it, the chief would like to know about it, the whole commission would like to know about it. In having a, the Board of Selectmen in charge, particularly the first selectman, whoever it may be, in charge of the police department, making the, the first selectman the boss of the chief and all the personnel, I think such a bad precedent. You can see how political appointments, which in this case, the chief would be a political appointment, you can see how that works in Hartford, for instance. They have no police commission. The chief is appointed by the Hartford Town Council. They roll over police chiefs in that city every two years. It's not something that brings continuity at all. That's one thing that the police commission does here in this town is keep continuity. Our members are elected in staggering terms. The Board of Selectmen does not. The board of selectmen does not. Every four years, the whole board is up. Every two years, everyone except the first selectman is up. So that continuity on the board of selectmen is lost, whereas if you keep that on the police commission, we're elected in staggered terms. I can go on more, and I probably will, and I'll probably post something publicly to clear up some other points that I'm sure I missed. But if there's anybody that would ever need to contact me, Robert Leach, 39 Church Street, you can always contact the police department to get ahold of me. My email is on the website, my, our town website. My phone number is available on the town website. And then again, if you call the police department and say that if you need to speak with the police commission, I'm available. I can be reached at any time.
Hey, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, move on. Board and commission resignations and appointments. So reappointments for the capital improvement planning committee.
I'm going to appoint Bob Leach to the capital improvement planning committee for a term expiring July 30th, 2020.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to appoint William Loves to the capital improvement planning committee as a regular member for a term expiring July 31st, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to appoint Adam Ian to the capital improvement planning committee as a regular member for a term expiring July 31st, 2020.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to appoint Richard Pippin to the capital improvement planning committee for a term ending, expiring July 34th, 2020.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to appoint Kathy Simonelli to the capital improvement planning committee as a regular member for a term expiring July 31st, 2020.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve, to appoint Tom Talamin to the capital improvement planning committee as a regular member for a term expiring July 31st, 2020.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to appoint William Towers to the capital improvement planning committee for a term expiring July 31st, 2020.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. New appointments.
I move to appoint Fawn, I'm sorry, Boitis?
Boitis.
Boitis to the beautification committee as a regular member for a term expiring May 1st, 2020.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to appoint Chelsea Boyd to the beautification committee as a regular member for a term expiring May 1st, 2020.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to appoint Amanda Bente to the beautification committee for a term expiring May 1st, 2020.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to unfinished business. And the next one is the charter, and we've talked a lot about the charter already. I'll just say that, well, first, if we're gonna vote on the charter November 5th, so there's a lot of time between now and then to understand what the charter revisions will be. And Monday, July 29th, we had a joint meeting with the charter revision commission, and on August, first, they're meeting now in another location. On August 5th, they're gonna give us the final questions, and on August 12th, we're gonna meet and choose what we wanna put forward to the ballot on November 5th. So, that's the general steps for things. And then we got from August 12th through the, to November 5th to really explain and publicize what those changes are. And the, you know, the voters can vote on them, and they can vote them down or vote them up, so that's the general scheme of things. Anybody else wanna say anything? The Tyler Regional Animal Care Shelter, Andy's answered some questions that came up when we met with the police commission. I'm trying to go with the animal control officer to the regional control center just to see what she sees and understand her, what she would do and how she feels about it. Any discussion about that?
Well, I could probably further discuss this. Isn't there a meeting on the 11th?
How, we're gonna meet with the police commission, I believe it's the 14th, it could be the 11th.
Bob, what date is it, the next meeting?
I believe that's correct, the 14th.
14th?
Yeah.
Okay.
So let's take it.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion? Okay. So we've done the warehouse point fire, we did the managed accounts, we've done the So, 12C is the approval of tax-free funds. Somebody wanna?
I move to approve the tax-free funds in the amount of $885.91, dated 7/30/2019.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I notice my name is still not on the list. I'd like some money back at some point.
I didn't get that cut, I might be.
Now, the farm lease. What we've done is we've sent letters to the four people who are renting the property to farm on, and I'll read the letter that we sent out. I'll leave out some of it. The land lease for the property at Blank expires on October 31st, 2019. This letter is to inform you that in accordance with Section 8 of the land lease agreement, the town of East Windsor will not be seeking to renew the land leases agreement with you. We will be accepting proposals for land leases and will notify you when the request for proposals has been posted. You are encouraged to submit a proposal. We wanna thank you for being a great tenant over the last few years. If you have any questions, call us and give us the number. So that's, we notified them that we're gonna terminate their lease on October 31st. In the next two weeks, we'll send out RFPs to them and make, publicize it, so...
And the bid period will be what?
Well, I don't know. I'm not sure, we haven't terminated.
We talked about three years, five years?
Three years and five years, but what I'm thinking, and we can discuss that, I'm thinking that they can lease the land from anywhere from one to five years, and that's what I'm thinking. And that requires somebody to lease it for...
And you give the bidder the option to do that?
I, I'm thinking of doing that, yes.
You're gonna get apples and oranges when you do that. It would seem to me that you should specify the time period that the town is offering a release, and then you get apples and apples.
Well, we said three to five years. Well, that's three different, three, four, or five.
Well, we talked about three or five, or five years, as I understood it, and if it's, but I would think that the town would wanna have a uniform bid period, uh, bid periods, just in order to get the, kind of apples and apples out from a bid stamp, like.
I think it should be three years.
Three years?
And that, that gives the farmers opportunity that, you know, they can't go somewhere else next year, but they could in a couple of years if that's their desire. But if we do it at five years, if we have something that occurs that we need that land to put something on, that, that could be a problematic issue if there was something that was really important.
That's, that's true.
Just buy out the lease. If it's a longer term, and there's some sort of, for example, if you wanted to put a new town hall on the Cogan property, and there was an active lease there with two years on it, you just buy out two years worth, the lease happens all the time.
Yeah, in fact, in the current leases we have, there's a 60-day notice that says we can get out of it, giving them a 60-day notice, but we have to take into account that if there's crops in the field, to wait till they're harvested. So we could put something like that in.
Well, I think to give them comfort.
You should have a buyout notification in it.
Okay. So three years?
I, I think it's, so, I spent a lot of time working at the Department of Agriculture.
You're the expert.
I think a three-year lease is limiting, and I think that there are provisions that allows you to get out, that allow you to get out of it sooner if there's a need, but I think that you allow for, for example, crop rotation, if you have somebody who wants to grow corn one year, hay and other row crops the third. There's different...
So maybe you're saying we should put it out for five years?
I, I'm more comfortable with five. I think that's also more farm-friendly.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'd buy around there.
There's a farmer down at the end of the table.
First off, you want to put in that lease that they couldn't grow certain crops like hay, it takes two months for it to really get going and growing in order to get a good crop off it, and like Christmas trees. I mean, you don't want someone putting those in and saying, "Well, God, I got trees growing, and it takes, you know, 25 years before I can cut them." So there's gotta be certain things, it's gotta be a seasonal crop only in that lease. I think three years is good, in my opinion. And if the lease has come to an end at the end of October, this bid process should be put out and finalized before the first of the year.
Yeah.
All right, so that the guy can get his, his seed ordered and make plans for putting in the crop. You know what I mean? So, I mean, there shouldn't be any length of time between the end of the lease and getting a new, when done right away.
Yes. So I think we, I think we'll be looking at September as the time that we'd open the bids.
Excuse me?
We'd probably open the bids in September for the lease, which would begin November 1st.
Yeah, but the lease is ended in October. You said the end of the town, the lease is October 31st.
Right.
We were talking about opening up the bids in September.
Well, no, closing the bids, really. Opening them up in August, mid-August.
So if you went out to bid in November, okay, and then opening in December, that would, that would give the guy, he'd be ready to go, you know, the first of the year to get things in line for what he wants to do over there.
Yeah, well, I'm saying we'd, we'd open it sooner than that, and we wouldn't wait till December. He could start planning if he, he knows that he's gonna get the lease, or he signs the lease to take, take over the property in November 1st, then he knows he's got a contract.
So, we, when I was at the department, we had custody and control of about 50,000 acres of shellfish beds that would be leased or licensed. We initially did leases for many, many years, and then started transitioning to a license for the following reason. When you have somebody who's got a lease, and they fall to link with unleased terms or the lease expires, the property, the, the person who was the leaseholder has a property interest in the things that are on it. In that case, it was shellfish. In the case of somebody who might be growing locally, it could be squash, it could be potatoes, it could be corn, it could be something. So if, if a leaseholder has not removed their property from the lease, that ends up in housing court, as weird as that sounds. So you could end up with a farmer suing the town in housing court, because that's where leases go. I, I understand the time frame question, but I think Steve makes a more valid point in that we need to make sure that whatever property is on there that doesn't belong to us as the property owner is properly removed. You know what I'm saying? Is that clear? I don't feel like that's clear.
I guess, I don't know what property you put out...
It has to be a seasonal crop.
Yeah, the crop is the crop.
It's a seasonal crop.
Okay.
The crops, which normally are done in the fall.
So what you're saying, it should be a seasonal crop?
That's a very key word here, because that was the issue that was on the Cogan property, where they planted all those blue-screws Christmas trees, and then afterwards, it was, when they sold it, then they were all sitting there, and that was a big job to get that cleaned off of there.
Well, I'm gonna, we're gonna, we're in the process of writing up that RFP, and so, and it should be written up like in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
So I'll send it out to all of you.
And the Ad Commission, you should send it to the Ad Commission, too.
Okay. Any further discussion on the farm?
The way this is gonna be written up, the high bidder takes off.
Takes, there's four pieces of property, so each one...
The high bidder on each piece gets it.
Yes.
Because before, it was determined, well, you know, hayland is worth maybe 20, and corn is worth 50, and tobacco is worth 100. There's not any more of that.
No, that's correct.
The high bidder takes it.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, and finally, our last agenda item is JV sports, and I asked Jason to, to speak to it because he has assignments on it, says support JV sports.
I stole a sign from Jeff's front lawn.
Oh, wow.
And I called him and told him I was gonna do it, but I called him because a neighbor actually saw me stealing the thing, and he was like, "Okay, I gotta fess up." So, with the budget shortcomings in the past year, the Board of Education was tasked with making some pretty hard decisions. And one of those, I think the very last decision they made was whether or not to continue JV sports. And they had to make the math work, and that was the last casualty of that activity. So, several concerned parents, spearheaded by these two in front here, have organized a GoFundMe page to fund the costs of reinstating junior varsity sports for those instances where there is enough interest from students to field a team. And the estimated target for that is a $20,000 campaign. So they put together a GoFundMe page and have done a hell of a good job of promoting it and drawing attention to the issue, and soliciting contributions to fund the reinstitution of JV sports with a grassroots approach. So, the way GoFundMe works, I don't know if they take a percentage or not, I know some of those services do.
They do.
But they raised, as John just said earlier, over $9,000 so far. That's almost halfway to the goal of reinstituting JV sports for all sports that might have an interest across the school year. They certainly have done enough at this point to cover the cost of fall sports, which start soon, and they don't seem to be slowing down at all. So, it's, it's a very easy thing, you can do it from your phone, you can do it from your laptop, you can do it from anywhere in terms of making, that you have internet access. You just give your credit card number to GoFundMe at the link that's available, and it becomes, the donation is made. You can also leave a memory of what it is or why it is that you're supporting the cause.
Yeah, and I'm glad that Sandra gave the directions, and so I'll read those and do...
You're also welcome to stop by. I do make coffee or tea and wine if it's after 6:00 PM.
You're right down here?
Yes. Yeah, so if you have any questions, we'd like to talk about it. We've made ourselves available.
Okay, thank you. Is that it? Okay. Moving on.
Actually, I would ask one, I think they, I think the donor ratio is, I think the average donation is $100, I think. So they have 9,000, correct me if I get this wrong, you have $9,000 raised, and I think you have about 90 donors, which is a pretty good...
It is.
That's a good return.
Also, if I might, plus one more part of that, if you do participate in any online activity, we are also at about 1,000 shares, which makes shares online, meaning you're sharing it with other people. It's also about $10 to $11 per share. So every time you are sharing it, you, you really are helping and making a difference. So we would also ask that you talk about it.
Good. Okay. Selectment report, so Andy, you're up.
There was no need, no need, nothing reported.
And Jason?
On July twenty-fourth, I think it was, I attended a community conversation again at MB Swim Reservoir. This is noteworthy, because it was totally driven by members of the community who just wanted to get together for a fun family fun of the night, to talk about how we can come together for a good purpose, which was to literally clean up our town. And they, they were new people who haven't been involved before, which was, to me, a very refreshing thing to see, and I wanted to note that in my, in my report tonight. On the twenty-fifth, the pension board had a special meeting. Of note from that meeting, as we discussed earlier tonight, was the approval of the appendices of clerical employees and dispatchers in the town's pension plan, and the approval of an additional advisor option that will be available to town employees if they wish at their own expense. On the twenty-ninth, the charter revision commission held a meeting to discuss their proposed changes with the board of selectmen. I didn't hear anything that changed my mind about the questions under consideration. They all strike me as divisive for the community, pitting different factions of the community against each other, or settling scores for past perceived slights or grievances. The proposals seek to codify concepts in the charter that should properly be established or considered by policy, so that they can be changed, rather than locked in place in the charter. More troubling, though, is that members of the charter revision commission and our own board walked out during public participation. That does not demonstrate an open ear to the concerns of the people, it shows that the people charged with drafting the changes and the questions that will appear on the ballot already have their minds made up, and aren't interested in the perspectives of those who may disagree with them. I'll be opposing those, those charter changes as they're moving forward.
Jason, I will comment about why I left. And the reason why I left, I'd been here since a little after six o'clock, and I am diabetic, and my blood sugar was dropping.
Okay.
Very fast. And I had to go and get something to eat.
Okay. I don't remember you leaving, though.
That was me.
Also, I would say, Jason, you say that you're going to oppose all of them, and actually, you're not, I don't think.
Close to all of them. We, we haven't just seen all the language yet, I'm, I'm reserving my right to oppose them all.
Well, I think you don't mind changing the treasurer's name to financial director.
I'm very curious to see how the question will be worded.
So Charlie, you're up.
I don't have anything this week.
Okay, and Steve?
Yeah, I'm gonna comment on what Jason said about leaving. Yeah, I was the one that got up and left, I think that's who you're referring to. The person speaking at the time was the last one to speak. And if they think I'm gonna sit here and be threatened with litigation, and the whole board was being threatened with litigation, and lawsuits, and many years of litigation because of the things that were gonna be put in the charter about the police department. I've heard it before, I wasn't gonna sit here and listen to that crap. No one's gonna sit here and try to intimidate me with law, and that was it for me. I got up and I walked out. And I don't regret it. That's all I gotta say.
Okay. And what I will say is, I looked at, again, the, the American Heritage River Commission report, and again, there's a lot of blues there, so the Scamp River's looking pretty good at this time. I don't usually report on this, because sometimes there's reds, and yellows, a lot of yellows, but this is good. I guess that, that does it, so we'll, we'll go into an executive session. Thank you for coming.
Bob, where's your check register?
Charlie's looking at it. Thank you. And I have the signs.
I'm gonna get a call from my mom.
It's a lover, calling you up.
Steve, your clerical lawyer, the litigation attorney, I spoke to. Call your boyfriend. The litigation attorney, he's sitting there, is he enjoying it, literally figuring it out to get rid of the lease? That's where he's sort of, does he keep it a routine? I don't see.
No, I will email you. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna write down what time we left, so that's, you know when we went in. Oh, yeah, I would've gone too. Okay. Okay. My email'll say when we ended, and if any decisions made, but I don't bet there will be. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I reserve time. I have issues, so I.
Take care.
I always, I just wish everyone, there's always, there's always someone leaving. I think my, I think my, I'm sorry about it, I missed you.
Huh?
I missed you.
No, I'm glad you sent your mail.
You know, you're older.
I know, but I did feel pretty uncomfortable in terms of what you liked your work, like...
It doesn't matter, you're home, man, go work, and actually, if it's during the day, like, before you did call me on that old phone. I usually throw my cell in the, in the drawer and...
I don't do well with my cell either, so. Okay.
But other than that, I'm on my cell. She was always real, so pregnant when I did all the work. And you know what happens when somebody gives up? They don't like the results. You seem afraid to tell them. That's a very good way to try to get donations, like putting signs up about somebody, calling them names. Very good way to try to get money from somebody. And I'm very generous when I'm donating for the kids, very stupid. I'll tell you what, as a matter of fact, I bought a denim gown today.